That's how it works. We need that.
Yeah, we have people.
Better athletes, more, more good athletes.
And I just want to keep it in explosive.
Good evening. We're gonna start now that I have my folder. Thank you, Dr. Ridderson. Sorry about the delay. So, welcome to the March 13th, 2017 Board of Education meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bob.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
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 Carson.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
And Julie.
Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the February 13th, 2017 and the February 27th, 2017 regular meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Gooding.
Yes.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is written communication. Do we have any written communication, Dr. Ridderson?
There's no written communication today.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now we're at information. The first item is report on student activities.
And we have, and we have Nicole Boyd here, our esteemed Director of Student Activities at ETHS, who has revolutionized student activities at ETHS. And I better stop there. Not too much hump buildup, but Nicole, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, good evening. This is the Student Activities School, the year-end report for 2015, 2016. And we started this school year last year with the Fourth of July Parade. As you can see, several students from Student Council and students who were not otherwise involved in a particular club or activity participated and represented proudly. So it was a great start to the year. So the goal simply put of our department is to get students involved. And this is in alignment with the school district, school board district goal two. The staff of the department includes myself and Robin Harkness is our Student Activities Specialist, and we make an awesome team. The Student Activities Department offers more than 90 different clubs and activities. And they cover a wide range of interests and talents and specialties. Anything from sewing or knitting club hobbies to things that are competitive like our Academic Bowl, our TSA teams, technology clubs. But there's a wide variety. There's something for everybody, is what we really tell students. On the right, that's the cover of our Student Activities brochure. And as soon as it goes to print, it's outdated because students start up new clubs all the time. Some of the benefits of involvement are for just enjoyment and personal satisfaction. One of the things that I'm most proud of is a lot of our clubs and activities, some are student-led and some are sponsor-led. And there's a wide variety of them that offer leadership opportunities. They may have an executive, an executive board or a leadership board. So students could be really taking the reins in some of the clubs and be really self-directed. Also, I'd like to highlight that last year, in collaboration with our Counseling Department, they started doing career clusters and matching all of our student activity, our clubs and activities with courses that ETHS offers. And we'll be doing more work with them this year. We did it again for the second year. And in the Student Activities Fair in the fall, we will have the different clubs aligned by career clusters. So we'll see more work with the Student Services Department next fall. Our ambassadors is one of the groups that does have leadership and an executive board. And it's really student-led. There are two adult co-facilitators, but it's really driven by student interest and student leadership. We do quite a bit to get in front of students in encouraging them to get involved. We participate in the Freshman Assembly. And on the first day of school, we're welcoming freshmen and having them imagine what their next four years may look like outside of the classroom. We present to FASH classes on the FASH Monday programs. In the fall, we host the Student Activities Fair in the main lobby. And we've kind of grown up each hall and into some other areas. So we've got about 75 clubs who will be on display for that. And all students participate during the lunch periods. The Student Activities Department, we co-sponsor the Incoming Freshmen Sports and Activities Fair with Athletics. That's in February of each year. And before that, Chris Livatino and I, we visit all of the Dish 65 middle schools and encourage them to attend and start talking to them about hobbies, interests, how to get involved in sports or how to get involved in clubs and activities and community service and fine arts. We participate in the transfer student lunches, which are hosted by our new Student Transition Coordinator. And she does a great job of doing an interest survey of all of the transfer students and matching them and sending emails to the respective club or activity sponsors and coaches. We display things in the Student Success Center, or in the cafeterias via the Daily Bulletin and the P.A. announcements, Happy Friday, and via the guide we saw a few slides ago. And this is one of the things that, one of my favorite things is Happy Friday. Twice a month, a different club or activity serves as the greeters in the morning at the front and rear entrances. And they're either high-fiving or dancing to music or passing something out. But they are the welcoming committees. They also get to highlight some of the things that are going on in their clubs or pass out literature if there's a particular awareness week or day or month that coincides with their particular Friday. They get to highlight that at that time as well. So, last year, we had several new clubs. One was the Flight Club. This is the club that they were building a drone. We had a Cartoon Club, the All About Games Club, which is one of my favorites. It draws in, I shouldn't say it's one of my favorites. It's one of the more popular. At this club, I just remember that the first time they met, I called Dr. Ridderson and was like, "You come upstairs and see this." There were like 104 kids in the hub playing video games. And that's like, the total purpose of the space was to be inviting and welcoming to kids after school. And they were in there. And it's just a huge variety of, of kids all coming together and just have a mutual interest, which I love to see. Dreamers Club was a new club, Chinese Culture Club, the South Asian Middle Eastern Alliance Club, Girl Up, and Hip-Hop Dance Club were some of the other new clubs. Girl Up is at the top, and that's the Hip-Hop Dance Club at the bottom. And the two women on the either side were interns. So even our interns, not just staff, get involved and sponsor clubs and activities. So several of our clubs are competitive. And so I just have some highlights about some of our competitive clubs. Ship Junior, they compete in the Chicago Regional Science Bowl every year. Last year, they placed third. And they've placed in the top five, I think, for maybe six or seven years in a row now. They're sponsored by Michelle Vasquez. Okay. Our Scholastic Bowl team last year, this, this club expanded and has a JV and a varsity. The varsity results are there, but JV had an undefeated season and were the CSL Conference champs. We're also, we just finished the season last week. We had a great year this year as well. And Seth Paternostro, who is now at Princeton, I believe, was named All-State, or, excuse me, yeah, All-Sectional. Ryan McLaughlin is that sponsor. Our Mock Trial team, last year was a rebuilding year for Mock Trial. They graduated a lot of seniors, so we had a lot of new interest. One thing to point out, there were a lot more female students who joined the team. And now I think we're about around 40. So they did, they did compete and got a lot of Best Attorney and Best Witness awards. Made it to the final round of competition in state. Kevin Kappick and Allison Sharo are the co-sponsors. Our E-Squad Step Team, really popular group. They're invited out in the community quite a bit. They also perform at pep rallies. They competed here at the Delta Sigma Theta Stomp Down and came in third. And they are part of the Illinois Stepping League. And they competed and came in fifth place. And their co-sponsors are DeWanna Fraser and Michelle Lyle. Ultimate Frisbee Team is also one of our most popular club sports. They always have a great record. So they had a wonderful season, had, came in first and second in respective competitions and then ninth place in state. And they're sponsored by Matt Moran. Our Chess Team was seventh in state last year. And seniors, Ian Seagars and Jay Magero were undefeated at state, which is worth noting. And we came in fourth place in the North Suburban Chess League. Sponsors were Tom Doan and Ken Lewandowski. And our DECA also had a wonderful season in that state. Fifteen out of 30 of our students finished in the top 10 for their respective events. And a few of the first place was Allison Neggars in Public Relations, Jack Caldwell and Ben Silverman in Creative Marketing, and Tali Kiroz and Holly Cunningham in Community Service Project. Their sponsors are Dave Feeley, Chris Manila, and Jennifer Weber. And the Evanstonian also had a bit of a, of a, not, I won't say rebuilding, but not necessarily as successful as the previous year when we were state champions. But they did well in sectionals. And there are various sectional results there. And Rodney Lowe is the sponsor of the Evanstonian. So in terms of overall participation, so we started, I started reporting Student Activities data with 2013, 2014 data. And as you may recall, that was information from my predecessor. So 2014 and 15, and 15 and 16, the data is really similar, which you can see here. It's broken down by federal race code. And here are the actual numbers in, for student involvement. And we compare, we looked at our opening school report to get our enrollment data and compare our participation to that. So we have 33% of our American Indian, Alaska Native students are involved in at least one club or activity. 49% of Asian students, 32% of Black or African-American students, 38% of Hispanic Latino, 33% of Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, 53% of students who are two or more races, and 55% of white students. So there are 1,428 unique individual students who are enrolled, or not enrolled, who are participating in at least one club, which is 45% of the students in this building who are in at least one club or activity, which is exciting to me. This kind of looks similar to the 2014, 15 data. And here we are, looking at it by gender. And I just want to say that, so there, if there are students who are gender non-conforming or are transgender, that's not identified in this data. But that's something, I'm not sure how we will capture that data or how students will report, but just so we're aware that it's just, this data is binary, but that's how it is presented right now. So we had 588 male students and 840 female students who participated for 15, 16. And we had an increase of students who were doing it, two or more activities. And these are non-sport and non-community service and non-fine art. So this is strictly club and activities. So you could be on Student Council and an ambassador or in Latino Quest and Senior Class Board. And here it is. So this year, we started reporting in terms of grad year rather than grade level. If there were students who were reclassified for some reason, it would be, it was difficult to capture that data. So we're looking, from this year and forward, looking at cohorts. So the class of 2019 would have been freshmen, the 2018 sophomores, 2017 juniors, and 2016 seniors. So that's the breakdown of the grad year cohort participation. And this was interesting data that I included in the report that we had that I'd never really looked at before. But since I had it, I was kind of excited about it to share that we know that students who are involved do, so not necessarily a cause and effect relationship. We do know that from my previous reports and from the athletic previous reports, that the students who are involved do earn grade point averages that are higher than students who are non-involved. And so when I took a look to see how we did, there were 23 different clubs who earned an average weighted year-end, so second semester GPA of 4.0 or higher. So almost a quarter, or maybe a little more than a quarter of our clubs, the students are doing very well in the classroom. And so then, of course, I just had to see who had the highest GPA, average team GPA, which was our WYSC, which is Wide World Youth in Science and Engineering. And Student Council, which I also am the sponsor of, was on there. And so I was proud of that. And Student Senate Honor, thanks for that. So the Student Activities Department, we host quite a few events. Homecoming is always one of the highlights of the year. We had 900 students attend the last year's dance. It was Neon Nights. If you could see, the, the Beardsley Gym was packed. It was amazing. And our homecoming, King and Queen, were Emmanuel Woodbury and Nadia Gary. We had a Frosh South Formal in the spring with a little over 500 students who attended the dance. The theme was Around the World. And then for prom, we had 700 students in there. Guest, their theme was Windy City. And Jalen, Jalen Jenkins and Nadia Gary again was prom king and queen.
So sweet.
Here, this here is our former student rep, Camille Allen, at the Dreams Delivered Prom Fashion Show, which is, we co-host with the Women's Club of Evanston. We also run a girls' group in partnership with Family Focus. We host two blood drives, one in the fall, one in the spring. And we, several of our teams, Ship Junior being one of them, do have formalized partnerships with Northwestern. I would not be able to brag about all of these wonderful accomplishments without our club sponsors, most of whom are volunteers. So I would be remiss to not thank them for all of their work and the time they spend with kids and several of them who sponsor more than one club or activity. I'm thinking of Liz Hartley. She does knitting club and the, the Classic Film Club. So we've got staff and interns and volunteers who are really involved. The Quanis Club of Evanston recognizes our, our students with a leadership, the Student of the Month Leadership Recognition. They recognize our students, athletics and fine art students. So we're always appreciative when Student Activities gets those recognitions. And our Booster Club, who give us a lot of financial support through their special allocations twice a year. And this was pep rally in the fall where there was the old-school, new-school staff battle. So our staff get involved with student activities.
It's really a shame you don't have the video with that.
There is, if I, if I could make that, if I could have embedded that and then got it to work down here, I would have included it. Because there are, there are several.
I can pass mine around.
I've seen it.
I still haven't.
We'll slide it in at the end of the school year. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you so much for that great presentation, great ending. Questions?
Questions? Question and comment first. Thanks. It's a great report. And it's particularly good to see it on the same night that we're talking about adopting measures towards our goals. Goal number two relates to student well-being. And we're talking about measures that relate to participation in extracurricular activities. So I think it's, it's perfect timing that you're here tonight to share that. It helps us connect it all up in our own heads as well. And I also wanted to thank you for including the percentage in this year's report. And it'll be great to see that going forward, percentage of students, so we can keep track of that percentage and how it changes that. And also the GPA information, which we've seen for the Athletic Department. So that's really, really great. And shout-out to the knitters, who also had a really high GPA. And I want it right up there with the mathletes. So I just want to say, I was pretty impressed as a, as a knitter myself. So I don't, didn't want that to go unmentioned.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
I had a question about, I know you work really closely with the Athletic Director and the Fine Arts here and the Community Service Coordinator. And the number, the, the number we have here is that 45% of students are in some activity under Student Activities, right? Between the four, four of you, have, do we have a sense of the, of the number of students who are not involved in any of those things?
Yes.
So, you know, in other words, obviously, some students who are in Student Activities are also in theater or also in sports. Some are only in sports or only in theater. Do we have, do we have a sense of what that number is of the percentage of students who aren't in any of those things?
Yes. So there are 693 students who we reached out to in the fall who were not involved in clubs, activities, athletics, and fine arts. Community service keeps track of their data in a different type of database. So some of these students could be involved in community service. But for the three of our departments, we all keep data the same way. So there were about 693 students. So we, what we did was sent an email to all of them. And we included information on how to get involved in all three of our, actually, all four of our respective areas with, like, our contact information, links to get involved, how do you get a, how do you sign up or register for sports? How do you, who to go to, or who to see, where to see? for sports, how do you, who to go to, or who to see where to go if you want to get involved in a club or activity. So there were about seven hundred.
So that's, I think roughly fifteen to twenty percent of my math.
Right, so it's fair to say, clearly eighty percent of our students are in something. That's correct. I want to be sure we got that percentage from Miss Livingston.
Yeah, that's a good.
I also want to be careful to caution, so it could be roughly eighty percent, but there are some students who, for like the, like the Fourth of July parade, for example, there's no data about the involvement of those students, or the students who just show up as fans, or the students who just show up to support their friends in the fine arts program, or come to a jazz concert. So I would be careful not to say that they're not involved, but there's just six hundred and ninety-three students who aren't specifically involved in these three arenas.
So my question to follow up on that was, we know how important it is for students to be involved, and we know how that's associated with behavior, with academic learning and so forth, and, and I appreciate the reach-outs with the, with the emails. Has any thought been given to maybe some like focus groups, or some, not, in other words, not communication from us to them, but to find out maybe from some of them, what are the barriers that they perceive to being involved in, in activities?
Yes, and we have done that several times through the PBIS committee. One of the subcommittee has done that, and we have surveyed students in PE and through, I want to say, English classes, but definitely through PE to, and a lot of the responses we get are either work, or caring for another sibling, being involved in a faith or religious thing outside of school, but some of the common things that we would expect would be some of the reasons, in terms of just, or for some students who may feel disconnected, who may not be performing well academically, may feel a little disconnected, but really it was just other commitments outside of school.
Okay, thank you.
Mark has something.
Well, back to Jonathan's point, and certainly I appreciate the outreach to these students, and that's necessary, but it occurs to me that the best recruiters are the kids. And I'm wondering if that, without divulging something we're not able to divulge, would it be possible to provide a list of these students so that club members could go down and go, oh, I know that person, I'll talk to, to he or she, and try to recruit? I mean, is that, is that viable? Do they want to recruit? Do they need to recruit any of these clubs?
I don't know if there's necessarily a need to recruit. I'm really kind of, I don't know how to say this, I think I'm comfortable with the reasons that there are some students who aren't involved. With the freshmen in particular, we did a little more personalized outreach through FAS teachers, so we did have that information. We provided it to Alicia Hart, and she reached out to each of the FAS teachers with the specific students in their FAS session who were not involved, and they could have personalized conversations. I know in terms of freshmen, I personally feel like we are in, incoming freshmen and freshmen faces quite a bit, so those who are not involved, it's not because we haven't tried a variety of ways to reach out. So I think overall, I'm, I'm not disappointed by the number. I mean, we have, this is a pretty big school, and for as many students we have, I'm so happy that so many are having a wonderful extracurricular experience, and for the feedback that we did get from the survey, the reasons why are either family release reasons, or they are involved, but it's just not here, and I think I'm okay with that.
Right.
Yeah, I wanted to piggyback, because you, you referenced something a little bit ago, Nicole, I just want to lift this up. Of those twenty percent-ish, there's no question, some of those were at Friday night's basketball game. Some of those were at Friday night's E-Town Idol. Some of those are doing community service. Some of them are involved in their place of worship. So we can't even, thank you, you're saying it, but I just want to lift it up again, you can't assume that all of those twenty percent aren't engaged, because they have a lot of ways that they, even if you think about coming to Wild Kid Academy, I mean, that's voluntary, that's coming back to school on a Saturday morning. So if you start to add it up, there are a lot of kids that are really engaging in one way or another.
Another thing that makes me think of too, is there, so right now, it is honor society application time, and one of the criteria for National Honor Society is involvement. So I've seen quite a few students who haven't necessarily been involved, and one, a junior's girl, who I'm thinking of in particular, who is particularly uncomfortably shy, and didn't necessarily want to join a club, but I said, perhaps maybe you want to spend your free period or study hall, not, she doesn't have a study hall, her free period or her lunch in the hub and work as one of the hub greeters, and do it in a, a less intimidating way for her. So we do have, you know, students who work every day, each period, and we don't track the hub greeters. They get community service hours, so their stuff gets tracked that way, but they wouldn't be on an activity roster. But students who are not otherwise engaged, and we're trying to find opportunities where, to kind of meet the kids where they're at and their comfort level, but that's something else that's coming up now. They're looking for opportunities, not necessarily a club, maybe can't commit, maybe are a little shy, but if they want to work in an office or do a solo community service project, those are things too, that some students may need in order to, to gain their involvement.
I have a question, and then just a comment. Jonathan's question reminded me of a question I asked Levatino about, I think there was a drop in, in participation in, in some subgroup, and, and I wanted to know why those kids were disengaging. And, and he said that he would find out and, you know, report on that next time, but it was, it was clear that they were connected, maybe the freshman year, and then they fell off, you know, there was some falloff, and so I'm always interested in that, you know, are we creating a welcoming environment? Is there some other outside circumstances that are pulling them away, which often happens? So I, that just struck that chord for me, so I'm reminded of that. But my question is, if a student is on social probation, are they able to, I'm assuming no, they're not able, or are they?
It depends on, they, it depends on which type of club or activity, yes. They would not be on one of our competitive clubs, but if there was a student who was on social probation, who wanted to be a part of the beauty club, or wanted to be a part of the video game club, a special interest group, they certainly do have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. Doug?
Thank you, wonderful report, and thank you for the work that's being done here. So just a small question and then a broad question. My small question is, is there a way to get that community service data talking with the other data, so we can have a fuller picture there, or is there some impediment there?
I don't know, that's something I can certainly look into.
It seems like.
They, they have a service transcript, but that would, that's just a conversation, and we meet regularly enough that I can, I can ask Mary Collins about that.
Might be worth asking, it'd be interesting to roll that in. My broader question is, just looking ahead, I just would love to hear from you, what you see as the biggest challenges and opportunities, just where you would want to take things.
One of the, well, one of the challenges is, so I have, it's like a blessing and a curse. I would love to be able to chase after all of the students' dreams all the time. Students come in my office every single day with new ideas of things that they want to do, and we try to work through that. Some of the challenges are, we don't have enough staff sponsors to be able to support as many different ideas and ideas for clubs that we have. There are some who are, who are sponsoring more than one club, and some of them need a varying degree of supervision or, or support. So one of the things that we did do is, we do have on Tuesdays and Thursdays where clubs without a sponsor can drop into the hub and just have a space to meet, but sometimes there are some, some students who have some really, really great ideas, and we have a hard time finding an adult to be able to attach to that for a variety of reasons. So that's one of the challenges, and it's all, and the other challenge is just creativity, is always trying to just one-up and do something better and different than you've done the year before, but that's, that will always be there. We want to make each event better, we want this homecoming to be better than the last one this year. We had live animals, I don't know what we're going to do next year. I mean, I don't, I don't know what to do. I thought the glow-in-the-dark was amazing, and it was, and then now we've got animals, and now I'm like, now what? So always just trying to raise the bar, so it's just kind of how we operate. We're always thinking about, what can we do better? How can we support more ideas? I will take this opportunity to, to thank both Marcus and Mary, because one of the challenges for student activities has been financial. And I have gone to them and proposed a budget increase, and they challenged me back to get creative about some things, but did provide some opportunities for at least some of our competitive teams to not always have to fundraise and just have some operating expenses, so I do appreciate that. But in a perfect world, there would be limitless money to be able to do a million different things, so I think it's, we're always just trying to find ways to do better and to do more.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on the staff sponsor thing. Does the sponsor have to be a staff member?
No.
Could it be a community volunteer?
Yes.
So do we have a process for sort of, when, when students have a club and they can't find a staff sponsor, for sort of reaching out to the community to find a potential volunteer sponsor?
In some cases, we have, but it, but in some cases, not. Yeah, but it's kind of like who a student might know or already be connected with. If there was, if they, I'm thinking like of our animal rights club, they were connected with some people at Care already, and that was like an easy connection, but for some, it's just a matter of capacity too. I would love to be able to, but we've got hands full.
I would add that, I mean, at some point in time, we could cast a broad net to say, hey, we need volunteers for these amount of clubs, send something out and see what we get. But we could, we've talked a little bit about that too, so.
You might be able to link into the city of Evanston has that volunteer registry where, where, you know, we'd have to talk to the city, obviously, about it, but where you can list things where volunteers are needed. So in the city, it's often, you know, helping out at an art fair or something like that, and then members of the community can be matched up that way. It's, it's kind of a nice system, maybe, it might be a possibility to connect.
And I think that would be amazing, but I'm reminded that it's just you and Robin.
I was going to remind y'all too.
So if you can convince them to get you somebody else, but it takes, someone needs to manage all that, and I mean, I think what we do at Evanston Township is remarkable in the way, and the fact that it's, it's you and one other person that's managing all these groups, that's mind-blowing to me. I don't, because I'm an operations person, so it takes, that, that's, that's hard work, and to do it well is extremely difficult. So volunteers need supervision.
Yeah, especially from outside.
And children need committed, committed volunteers, so it's, or not children, they're not children, you know, our teenagers. So I mean, you know, hats off to you for doing all of this.
I was going to say that the volunteer link at the city is in development, you know, they're always looking, and, you know, Gretchen was great to point that out, was what I was going to say, because there are so many volunteers in the community who want to be matched up. But how, you know, what, what's, what umbrella do we put them under, 3-1-1? Is it, you know, where is it in the city organization? Because as we need volunteers in the community, as things develop around our community, we really need to plug the volunteers in. So anyway, yeah, anyway, it's a great place to find people. Oh, I was going to say that I've been approached by tradesmen who wish to be here in the school, teaching their trades. So, you know, if someone wanted, if a student wanted to learn woodworking, you know, or something like that, there are a lot of people out there who have trades, and the type of trades that are disappearing, because families don't commit to them anymore, children, they don't take over family businesses. So anyway, but I know that you guys are only a few people.
Thank you.
One question that I have, when do you know that a club has lived its life, this or else?
Well, probably at our sponsor meeting at the beginning of the school year, will, that'll be the first time we get our rosters. It'll, and if we have a whole bunch of seniors who are graduate, they, sometimes they just come and tell us, because they're worried, or they want us to help them find somebody who's going to carry it on for the next year, but either a sponsor will tell us, will know at our sponsor meeting during institute days, or the kids who are so concerned about the legacy of the club, or what's going to happen after we graduate. And that's something that I talk to junior students about a lot, when they come to start a new club, we talk about sustainability, and what it's going to look like, and who the leaders are going to be, and how are we going to train them, so it won't, you know, the All About Games Club was started by a senior who, this was his first involvement besides playing freshman year football, and that's one of the things that we talked about all year long. So what happens when Max Wallace, when you graduate, what happens to this club? And so he had leadership, and now it's All About Games Club, it's run by sophomore and junior brothers, so we got three more years of leadership, but that's something that, in most cases, we try to be intentional about.
Yeah, kind of think I had, yeah, yeah. Great, yes. All right. Well, thank you so much. This is always so exciting to hear.
And I'm sure you'll agree, my introduction was by no means overstated. Great job, Nicole.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. So moving on, we are, Mr. Clark is coming to the table to talk to us about school calendars.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here it is.
So in your packets, you have, we consider the final version for, of the school calendar for the seventeen, eighteen school year. You did pass a tentative one last year. This is the final version. There really isn't a significant difference from that calendar, but I think what is significant for me to point out with the seventeen, eighteen calendar is that we are aligned with District sixty-five. Excuse me. We do have the same start date and the same ending date, and that there are only two days on their calendar that they're out of school that we don't match. So I think that's what's significant, that's what we were charged to do, and I think that's really great.
Yes.
Bravo.
And the other calendar that you have is a tentative calendar for twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year.
You know, I'm just going to point out, I don't mean to interrupt you at all, but at least on mine and Mark Metz's, and it sounds like other board members are, that tentative one for the next year is, I'm glad it's tentative, because it's really all gobbledygook in our packet. All the dates are blurred together, so I, you know, we obviously all looked at our board packets in great detail before we arrived here tonight, especially as, as it concerns the calendar, so I'm sure that it won't get in the way of approval, but I just wanted to point it out that we, so we can get the correct one in there.
Okay, all right. So then, I won't even talk about the eighteen, nineteen, but there is a tentative eighteen, nineteen school calendar that's, that we have done, and so maybe we'll talk about that another time when they come up for vote.
I can vouch for Vernon, his copy is clean and readable.
I think it was okay in the packet.
Well, the dates are on the side, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think this is definitely though, a technology frustration.
For sure.
Yes. So are there any questions about?
Yeah, I just want to relatedly, and it's too bad that that other one just got a little tangled up on, on our screen, it is a great-looking calendar and so readable in terms of, I think you've really improved this format, so that at a glance, we can see the circled start and end dates, the boxes, the shading. It's, in years past, our calendar has been so difficult to read and to figure out, and you keep looking at the key. This is beautifully presented, so I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, and I will not take credit for the format. I will give that credit to our communications office, Evangeline, Seymark, and Takumi.
Nice.
Their idea for the format, and we have been working with it. At first, I had some ambivalence about it, because I'm not necessarily good at tech and all that, but we learned to do it. but we learned to do it.
Looks good.
Other questions? Jonathan?
Well, you can take some credit for the alignment with District sixty-five, though, and that's, that's an incredible achievement. And I think there are a lot of grateful parents out there, you know, who appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Awesome. Okay, alright. We are moving right along. We're at our textbook adoption and deletion proposals. Dr. Davis.
Okay, textbook adoption. I'm gonna keep it very brief, but we'll have time for Q and A. The first thing, you know, each year, we establish priorities and budget. We identify a textbook need. We go off of teacher recommendation, new courses. Department chairs review these textbooks. We have a curriculum forum review, board presentation, followed by board action. Here you see our rapid chart, again, just outlining the process. You'll see that it's all delineated, who recommends. You'll see that I have to agree, along with the CFO, about the budget, making sure that our selections meet the budget requirements and constraints. The whole process is laid out there, and this, we share this with our faculty as well, so that they know that the ultimate decision, when it comes to textbooks, rests with the board, with input from various constituents. But that's, that's the rapid layout. The forums are very interesting. They include copyright date, cost, and assessment of materials. There was a decimal point missing in the, in the memo. It's not one point two million dollars, it's actually one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. And let me emphasize a couple things before we get, jump in and start our discussion. The state provides no financial support for purchasing textbooks. Early in the process this year, we were looking at spending a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in purchases. We were able to trim forty thousand dollars from those initial requests. The increase we see over previous years, nah, it's not there, but there it is. The increase we see over previous years is driven really by two major purchases, our four Spanish, Spanish honors, and our two Chem Fizz. Together, they account for fifty-four thou, over fifty-four thousand dollars in purchases. But we were able to afford these purchases, because we've kept costs down for several years. So that, that's also very important. We've reduced the number of consumables that we use. Those are annual purchases, think workbooks, annotated texts, things like that. The Chem Fizz book was very old, I believe it was eight years old, and the Spanish book was out of print. So I really couldn't put those purchases off any longer. I tried. One of the things I want to point out is that publishers are also acutely aware of the online textbook market, and have set the price for online texts to a comparable level of the hardback text. So what ends up happening is that every five years, they cut your access to those online texts, and they make you re-up and purchase at full price. Didn't take them too long to figure out how to play the online textbook game. You'll also notice a variety of texts in our civics course will be used this year. They'll be on a rotational basis through the class. That's why we didn't have to purchase nine hundred and fifty of every text, which is how you accrue massive amounts of, of spending. The other thing to look at is our sophomore English class. One of the caveats is they have access to all of the current sophomore novels in the bookroom, and will add to those selections going forward. There's one edition this year, there'll be other editions in years to come. And those texts are financially neutral ultimately, because they're purchased in exchange for annual consumables within that department. So instead of spending twenty thousand dollars a year on consumables, they shift some of that cost to purchase new texts. So that's, that's another way we've tried to keep costs down. But, I'm just dreading the day the biology textbook goes out of date and we have to purchase a ton of those. But, so, absolutely open to questions. Oh, let me do a thank you. Teachers, department chairs, Adrian Rosen, she works our bookroom, she's in charge of that. The textbook distribution center staff is amazing, because ultimately, they're gonna order these books, and then they're going to be responsible for not only cataloging, but distributing these books. Ms. Johnson, my secretary, very instrumental in the process, members of curriculum forum. And, you know, when I updated this slide, I took Bill Stafford off and I put Mary Redino there. So, thank you, Mary, for your help this year, and, and going forward. Yep, I, I made sure to, I caught that right before I came up. No, I caught that a while ago. So are there questions about the texts? I can talk through any of the texts, and I'm well versed in, I haven't read them all, but I certainly can talk about why, why the selections were made.
Questions? Jonathan?
I had a question about civics. I, I think the books, the books are wonderful books. They're diverse and they're provocative, and, but I was just curious, the civics requirement, as I understand it, was adopted by the state, because they thought that our students weren't learning how to be citizens in our governmental system. And I was curious just about the decision not to have a text that is a, a sort of traditional, you know, US government, how your government works text, in addition to, obviously, all of these other perspectives.
Well, there's your nine hundred and fifty texts. But, long story short, they're developing a reader that'll do that. And that's a lot more affordable. They, meaning the civics team that's developing the course, are gonna develop a, a reader that will be PDF'd and put online, through online available texts, so we won't have copyright violations.
That'll tell how a bill becomes a law.
Yeah, that, yeah, that'll be there.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? You said that, that you were able to reduce the cost by doing some trimming. What kind of, how did you do that?
Well, what we did was we looked at, I didn't cut a single book from the list. That would have, that'd have been easier to do. I probably could have cut another, you know, I could cut the whole thing. No. What I did was I worked with the department chairs in, in the number of the texts that we would have to purchase. So instead of, for example, purchasing, you know, nine hundred copies of The Consciousness of a Liberal, we purchased four hundred and thirty-three based on our rotations. So you can read, you, you, one group will be reading The Consciousness of a Conservative. The way we're looking at sectioning, there'll be more kids, because of the teacher, there'll be more kids actually reading that at once. And then, it'll be a max of about five hundred kids. And then the balance will be reading The Consciousness of a Liberal, and then we'll rotate. It's new for the history teachers. It's just something English teachers have done for a very long time at ETHS, rotate books through the bookroom. So that was a way, really, to start bringing those numbers down. And then getting accurate counts in terms of going from estimates to actuals, in terms of the numbers. Some of these numbers were twenty, thirty percent over what the actual need was. And, and that was only determined through our sectioning process. We were able to get accurate counts and make adjustments. But yeah, that's how we did it.
Fabulous.
We did it quickly, too.
Yeah, perfect. Great. And? I just wanted to say that in curriculum forum, the books kept on going around the table, and each one that came around was more exciting than the last. And there were great reasons, which I wrote in my, in my report, about what, well, great thoughts on, on each text by people who were on the forum, or in the forum committee with me. And it was just very exciting, especially the civics books. They were just really the greatest. Thanks, Pete.
You're welcome. I, I also think that, you know, it's an emerging, the civics course is an emerging course, so we may see, just as a preemptive, we may see some more civics titles in the future, just like we'll see more English titles.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. This is quite exciting. I'd like to read them all. Alright, so we are, Dr. Davis has not moved. So that means he's, he's gonna stay, well, wherever. It's up to you. As we talk about measures for Goals Two, Three, and Four.
Sorry. So now, as we transition to measures for Goals Two, Three, and Four, I just wanted to give you a brief update. Case contacted me after the last, between the last time we talked about this, measures and this time. And with their, sort of their feedback, we were able to include a target for extracurricular participation. You saw that previewed a little earlier. We're gonna integrate that into our reporting. You see it now reflected under Goal Two. But very exciting, they, they suggested a survey out of Stanford for well-being. It's, it's used in Palo Alto. I, I looked it up, did some preliminary research, worked with Taya Kinsey and Kate Julian. And we, we plan on either using, in the, you know, next year, piloting either that survey or an adaptation of that survey for, to validate it against our population. Our population radically is different than Palo Alto's population. We have to validate the survey. It's a measure of well-being. And we know that the stresses that Evanston kids could, could have, could be different than those that are students. Some of them will be the same as the stressors in Palo Alto. But, you know, other, others, other things may not be in there. So we want to make sure, we plan on putting that measure and target into the goals, but we're gonna administer it next year, portions of it or the entire thing. But we're committed to doing that. And that'll be, once validated for our population, we'll be integrating that into reporting on Goal Two. Another exciting development, since we last met, we now have a data sharing agreement in place among District sixty-five and you and ETHS. And then I provided in the appendices, we conducted additional research with David Figlio, and we found that five or more consecutive semesters at any tier college or university to be the optimal predictor for college graduation. I know that's exciting. I had to say it. I read it right off of my little prompter here. And I have a graphic, if we want to have a discussion around it, I actually have a graphic for that, and I can put that up. But we're waiting for District sixty-five to get back to us. We've contacted District sixty-five, shared that, that, that update about that measure, about that outcome. And we're waiting to, to hear from Dr. Goran and, and his, his leadership team over in District sixty-five.
They're pretty busy right now.
Yeah. Alright, so we can talk through each of the, should we go goal by goal? I would suggest maybe we go goal by goal. Acknowledgements has been a, in the upfront of the memo is the whole process, but I'm not gonna go over that process again. Goal Two has to do with student well-being. You know, we've added the hundred percent of students, you know, we'll do the aspirational target, and we add a participation, we'll disaggregate by race, IAP, ELL, and income, just like our other measures will be reported. And we will integrate, in the body of the memo, we talk about integrating the survey. Any additional feedback on that one? Something you want me to look at? Jonathan, I'm sorry.
Is there some way that we could, I understand that we need to validate the survey. And, and so, if it is not a useful tool, we won't use it. But I assume that's true for all the tools that we use, that if we discover they don't work, we, we use a different tool. I, I'd really like to see some reference to it in the outcomes and measures as we adopt. If we, maybe not a commitment to that particular survey, but that we're going to be looking at the things that that survey measures, stress and so forth.
Absolutely.
Can we build that in? That would be good.
We'll, we'll absolutely include that. I just wanted to make sure we were fine with that before I did anything. Goal Two, okay, I'll make that adjustment to Goal Two, and I will circulate that.
How do you know if the survey is effective, or like, successful? What's the measure that you use to determine that? Like, once we use this one, what happens?
So that's a lot of statistical, probably, you know, information, and we'll run some, I don't know. I'm the wrong guy to ask that question to, to be honest. When I say validate, what we have to do in a nutshell is we have to make sure that the inferences we can make, this is really important, actually, that's a great question. We have to make sure that the inferences we can make based on the information we get from that survey are helpful and promote well-being. That's why I referenced the fact that it's been used in Palo Alto, which is Silicon Valley, which is a different population than ETHS. So we just want to make sure that the information we get from the survey, we can change our practices, and we can be responsive to the feedback. We're also gonna integrate, it'll be a hybrid survey. We're gonna integrate other surveys to get at, to get at our, our well-being for our, for all of our students. So, that's how we're gonna do it. And I did that without saying the word validity and reliability, so I'm kind of excited about that.
I have, I have one question, and I, I don't mean to open complications here, but it seems to me, well-being is addressing something in many ways even broader than achievement, which is the focus of the first goal. And, so I'm wondering if there is a reason, or whether it's even possible to track well-being by gender, gender identity? It seems to me that we've had a lot of discussion in, recently, about issues that are particular to women, anybody in the, who's part of the LGBTQ plus community, with respect to well-being. I'm not sure that it's as much of an issue on the achievement side. Honestly, I don't know one way or the other. But on the well-being side, I'm particularly talking about mental health issues and, and that kind of thing. So, I don't want to complicate it. I know we've adopted, you know, I don't think it's inconsistent with the language of our goal to think about that.
Yeah, I think we could include.
It's just, honestly, I, until I was sitting here tonight, wasn't, wasn't particularly thinking about it. But I'm looking at the measures we've listed, and we've called out race, disability, language status, and income.
I would, yeah, it's up to the board, if that's, I mean, we could certainly do it. The other, the only, the caveat would be,
Maybe it's.
The size of the subgroup, but I think if, if subgroups are sufficient, we would report that along with our, with all of our, we could do that. We'd have to be very particular.
I'm not sure we can ask, you know, for example, the, this came up in our extracurricular report. We have, we report male, female participation. So, I don't know what to do about, you know, gender fluid students who, who aren't gonna fall into one of the two. So, anyway, I, I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench in it, but I think maybe we should consider it.
Yeah, we can, we'll look at moving beyond, into the.
Maybe it's something that comes up in the survey. I don't really know if that's a component of the survey.
Depends on maybe how, how that survey requires students to identify.
Right, because of course, we can't require.
Right, right.
Would it be at least a step in the right direction to add gender to that last one? On the extracurricular activities?
Then you're gonna get the binary, I think.
Yeah, and I think it's.
Gender.
Well, for, for one thing, we already do it, or at least we have been doing it on extracurriculars. So I guess that won't be anything new. And I'm, I'm thinking, I'm less concerned about participation in extracurriculars, and more concerned about maybe some of these other areas. Thinking out loud.
I'll work with some folks and bring back something for a conversation, discussion.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm interested in, in you doing some background work to see how it can be done, rather than just putting it down here. Because I think there's more thought and, into making sure it's right versus just making sure it appears.
Correct. Great. Anything else on goal two? I will bring that back to the team and see what we can come up with. Let's move on to goal three, which is fiscal accountability. I went back and looked at some discussion around that, and there was discussion around strategy or measures, or strategy or outcome. There was discussion at the board level in January around that, specifically around participation in EdRed and advocacy for financial work.
And so, what do you, how do you think we can highlight that in a way? For example, I see under, under the current draft in the chart, we have, in column two, which I guess is the measure, we list annual monitoring of the budget to assure budget compliance and budget stays within revenue levels, which obviously makes sense. But, it seems to me, I don't think it belongs in that same box. But, monitoring of our, you know, what goes on in Springfield, monitoring the state legislative situation, monitoring relevant state legislation, slash advocating to protect our local interests. I think something along those lines needs to be included here. And I remember, you're right, it did come up in our early discussions, and we didn't quite know where to put it. And I had that exchange with you today about it, and Dr. Witherspoon as well.
But, I do totally agree with you that looking what's going on in Springfield is critical to maintaining our AAA bond rating.
Yes.
Because, right now, we can, we are, in fact, I would argue, we are doing everything right. And they could still make decisions that we lose, that would force us to lose the AAA bond rating. So, that is exactly where that's, will have the impact.
Right. Maybe that is the box. Maybe that's where we.
I mean, whether it's property tax freeze, or whether it's, you know, all of a sudden.
Pension shift, school funding reform.
Yeah, this has, you know. Annual monitoring isn't gonna cut it. I think it needs to be regular monitoring.
Yeah. Right. That's.
Along with our, you know, I mean, it's a, I don't know if it's a standing board agenda item, but I do know that it's a committee report.
Yeah.
So, if I could, is it sufficient?
You could reference EdRed, but I think also, what I'd like to see, because, of course, yes, we will continue our EdRed membership. We will continue having those reports and those updates. I would also like to see a little bit of an effort to memorialize in this goals document, the need to transmit what we're learning and engage the community in the need to not just have that information, but to use it to advocate with our local, local meaning state legislators. It's about trying to, trying to empower our community with the information they need to be advocates for our students and their, students which are their children. And we're partners in that. And I don't wanna lose, you know, I'm not trying to shift the responsibility. But, the fact is, our voice is not effective in Springfield as just a school board member. The only reason a school board member has an effective voice in Springfield is because we represent a community of many, many, many different types of people and students who depend on legislators to create and support a good learning environment.
Anne?
Well, I was just, I will piggyback on what Gretchen said, because the Collaborative Community Legislative Committee is that format. But, certainly, we have had less involvement in that over the years. And because it came out of the Joint Legislative Task Force of the PTA Council, really, our development with District 65 and the board members that are members of the committee who represent District 65, we just need to look at that again as to how we can functionally use that group to, in fact, do what Gretchen suggested. Also, people get their information in the community from the roundtable, from other sources as to what's going on in Springfield. But, to actually highlight it has to do with public education funding particularly, or legislation that is really going to affect District 65 and District 202 directly. We just have to talk about this as to how we're going to make the committee perhaps a part of that and/or have some function within both school district websites as a linkage in some way. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, Gretchen, or not.
I'm just not certain, maybe Pete, you can answer that, this. If it's a measure or a strategy, you know, will it be, because I agree, I think the monitoring and what the state does definitely needs to play into, or what the state is doing definitely needs to play in one of our outcomes. But, it's more, to me, it's more the back work, the strategy that you will have to do in order to help us meet our outcome, as well as the marketing and the communication and how well we keep people informed. You know, those will need to be strategies to help us get to that ultimate outcome. Because, as Eric said, we can't maintain our AAA bond if we don't do what Gretchen is stating. But, it's not a measure, in my experience.
Yeah. I mean, the challenge is to take something that is absolutely necessary for the district and somehow have a statement about it, right, under this fiscal accountability goal. That's why I was thinking about annual, regular, monthly. There has to be, I think, some statement of time and then what that context is, because then we could measure that. Did we do this? Did we advocate monthly? Did we?
Right. But, we need an outcome. I think the outcome we're looking for is something along the lines of maintain an adequate and predictable level of funding from the state.
Yes.
That's the outcome we want. And then, all these other things are things we're doing to try to make that happen, which includes the things Gretchen was saying about informing our constituents, you know, the public, partnering with the city, talking to our legislators, using EdRed, using the joint, the community committee.
Right.
You know, all these things are strategies that we use to accomplish that. But, I think the outcome we're looking for, again, is to get adequate and predictable funding from the state.
Yeah. That's realistic, though.
Yes. Hard to be predictable.
Add realistic.
Yeah.
These are aspirational outcomes.
These are aspirational.
Aspirational.
Highly aspirational.
Well, they are aspirational. And I think that does not, I think, adequate, you know, right now, it's adequate. The definition of adequacy may shift depending on what gets taken away. So, I think adequate gives you, you know, gives you appropriate room.
But, certainly predictable.
Predictable is, I absolutely agree. And I think that's, we've been let down almost more on that side of things.
So, if we capture it as an outcome, then, that says, maintain adequate and predictable funding from the state, and then we put some measures aligned to that, and then the strategy, some, you know, some of the things that we've talked about tonight would fall under the measure.
Yeah.
And some of them would fall under strategy. But, I think it would have its own space to live within here.
But, instead of maintain, could we maybe say seek? Because I feel like maintain is beyond our control.
Right.
Right. Exactly.
That's great.
And it could be an outcome that we never achieve.
That's exactly right.
So, personally, I'm more comfortable with seek. But.
Thank you. That's good.
Because it has to be, an outcome has to be something that we have total control of.
Right.
Yeah, we can seek it.
Because then we can change it and adapt it.
And as you set up this model, too, this becomes informational for other school districts who have legislative arrangements between their board members, elementary school, high school. It just gives them a little better idea of how we're going about this, too.
Right.
It would be very helpful to other school districts.
If that's appropriate, add a box in.
Pat, I have a just couple of minor things in this, in this area. One is just a word, just a really minor thing, but it's just, I keep looking at that bullet. I'm looking at the second box down the first bullet. I feel like we need another word in there. It says balanced operating budget annually to the Board of Education. So, I think we're saying reported annually to the board.
Submitted, probably.
What's that?
Probably submitted.
Submitted or something like that.
Okay.
And then, the second, the next bullet under that, I was wondering where it says, okay, make your budget analysis, capital improvement plan to assure regular evaluation of expenditures. Could we say assure regular evaluation and optimization of, I'm getting, I'm trying to tie it back to the word prudent? So, it's not that we're just evaluating our expenditures, we're trying to optimize it? I don't know.
So, I would read, review to assure regular evaluation, optimization of expenditures in infrastructure. Is that what, that's what you're suggesting, Doug?
Right.
Assure regular evaluation and optimization? Is that?
I think maybe we can work, if you look at the outcomes column, what we're describing now as a measure is probably the outcome. That is, the outcome is the optimization. The measure is the periodic process of getting there, right? So, maybe if we kind of flipped the two columns, so that sentence, our practice of regular periodic evaluation, that should be a measure, and in the outcomes column would be the optimization. Does that make sense?
I'll work with, I'll work with Mary on it and get that done. Yeah, we can do that, I think. I'll defer, I'm gonna defer to Mary on whether that makes sense, but I can wordsmith it and move it. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah.
I have one more.
Oh, Gretchen, I'm sorry.
That's right. Under the last box of the financial, it's maintain the district's transparency of financial reporting. No problem with that. And I don't have any problem with continuing to receive awards, which I think goes partially to the transparency piece. But, I'm not sure, and so, I don't know if I'm treading into strategies here at all. But, part of transparency, it seems to me, is not just announcing to the public that we've received an award, which is kind of what I'm reading the second column to say. You're, go ahead.
Well, I want to point out, actually, though, those awards are based on national standards and best practices. So, I agree with you. If it's just an award, da-da-da. But, in this case, the award is affirming that we've followed best practices and national standards. So, I think we're all right on that. But, you may still be wanting to get at something else in strategies.
Yeah. And so, in particular, what I'm getting at is something, I think we've had a little discussion in our quarterly budget updates around getting input from the public on if cuts are gonna come, where does our public expect to see that happening? So, that we're not coming after the fact to announce budget cuts, because the pension shift has happened, the property tax freeze has happened, school funding reform has happened. All of those things have happened, and now we're, now we're in a predicament. So, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about this piece about how we interact with the public around those difficult conversations.
That's, that's not in our goal, though. That's more or less in how we would operate. And if.
And that's fine. I'm just, I'm seeking, I'm seeking some clarification, whether that is a strategy about how we maintain transparency. And that, maybe that, maybe that is.
Well, I would point out that in June, technically, our meetings are budget hearings.
Right.
So, I mean, there is an opportunity at that, I mean, every year.
Agreed.
And that's part of the reason why the structure is that the school budgets aren't finalized till September. It's, you know, partially property tax, income, and other things.
True.
But, there's always that hearing that is publicized.
And the one that nobody comes to. Yes.
Maybe that just means we're doing a great job, though.
People have a degree of trust.
But, I mean, there is at least an open forum.
No, there is. There is. And maybe, you know, maybe it's just a question of.
I think if we were facing the kind of cuts that you alluded to, where it was like serious, hard decisions have to be made, I'm sure that we would publicize that and maybe hold that hearing or a special hearing even. And I think we'd hear from people.
I do, too. I think people would show up if we were, if we were looking.
And advocate for the things that they thought were important for us, Keith, and, you know.
Yeah.
Which is what we need to hear.
I think by this language, we've established a standard that we can be held to, that as we've said, we're gonna be transparent on financial reporting, community taxpayers. And if, at some point, we make significant cuts and they are, they come as a surprise to the public, then we haven't lived up to the standard that we've set for ourselves.
Exactly right.
It isn't. It is a perfect double check.
Yeah. I think we're good. Plus, we have that last point, annual compliance with district adopted financial policies. It's kind of a little bit of a catch-all, but we do have policies and procedures that we follow, and, you know, we're supposed to follow, and we need to make sure that we are. And if we do those things, I think we'll encompass a lot of the transparency issues that we raised.
Right. I guess what I'm hearing Gretchen say is that we be intentional about that being a strategy that leads us to the outcome. So, that we accomplish all those things, not because, you know, we've been comfortable doing it, but that because of the state we're in, literally, we are more intentional about doing it. So, I think that's our, you know, responsibility to make sure that we do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Goal four, which is the, if everybody's all right, should we go to goal four?
Yeah.
All right. Community engagement and partnerships. Just a reminder, this is our, ETHS will strengthen parent guardian relationships to create an effective continuum of learning and a seamless transition into and out of ETHS. So, this is your transition from middle school, from eighth grade to the high school. It's also your transition from high school to post-secondary. And under that, currently, we have 100% of partnerships are aligned to and contribute to the attainment of district goals. That's a district goals partnership matrix that demonstrates that alignment. We have 100% of parent guardians demonstrate involvement with ETHS. There's a variety of ways to measure that. And 100% of students meet the freshman on-track indicator from the state, that the state provides us in terms of how many freshmen are on track for, we don't create that one. That one's handed, that one's given, provided to us by the state.
Yeah.
So, one, just quick clarification there. On that parent involvement measure, it sounds like, will you be building some kind of measure that takes all that in? Or, are you just saying you'll be measured by these various things?
We're gonna measure by those various things. And we'll, and it's not, it's not a limited list. I mean, we're gonna look at the best available data we have and, that we capture, right? Some of those, we already, we capture passively, like home access center, you know, access to home access center. That's, that's done every time you log in. Some are attendance at school events. I mean, you know, that's, depends on the event. But, we're gonna work, parent teacher conferences, that's an easy one to calculate. Signups for parent teacher conferences. But, we're gonna, you know, look at what we have, and then we're gonna add to it as we refine it. We've done similar things in the past, but we feel we can do a little more, have a more sophisticated look at it. All right. Additional questions about the appendix? Just a riveting read.
We've seen this before, right?
Yeah, but we updated it, you know. The consecutive enrollment for five or more semesters at any tier college or university, what we did this time was we looked at students, let's say it was a four-year graduation rate, you know, we looked at the four-year graduation, or the four-year, we looked back, if we included students who graduated in three years or two years this time. So, we included students who actually graduated prior to, and that's why those numbers changed. You'll notice that there's a leveling off. There's only one important chart in there. Should I pull that one up for everybody? Should I pull that one up for everybody? All right, I'll do that, just a sec. All right, so, there's the chart that, that has been revised. That, that blue arrow there is the five or more semesters, the five plus.
Right.
You'll see that if you attend a top-tier college or university, again, we've been through this before, there's a ni, if you go five contiguous semesters, it's a 94, you're probability of graduation is 94%. It's 82% for a tier-two college, and at that point, for a tier-three college, which are open enrollment institutions, it becomes 80%.
This is, this is a very good change, I think, from the three semesters that we were talking about last year, because I remember on the comparable charts, some of the students who were in the non-competitive, they were like 56% or something probability of graduating. Eighty percent is much better.
It's solid, and one of the things we looked at last time, you know, the first time we did this, we looked at everybody together, right? And that, of course, is inflated by our tier-one and tier-two kids. And that's where you get the three-plus, and it's, it's 81% probability. But then when you pull back and you just, you just aggregate by tier, you see that our tier-three students, correct, Jonathan, long story short, you're right.
So, there's the thing, though, I mean, because it does come back to the question, one of the other questions that we were examining about that was, the deeper you go into college, the less things that happen in high school have to do with what's going on in college, right?
Correct.
So logically, one might make the case that at three semesters, you could say that high school is more impactful on those outcomes at three semesters than on the outcomes at five semesters.
Right.
Right? Because there's all those other inputs that are happening in life along the way. High school kind of recedes into the background, and then there's that whole validity question again.
But my understanding is that that essentially is the next step in the process. That is, identify, are there a set of characteristics of a student who's in ninth grade, 11th grade, et cetera, that correlate with, with, you know, with the five-year, making it into the fifth semester?
Yeah. So what we'll do, right, we're gonna go back and we're gonna do exactly that. We're, and, and when I say we, I don't mean me, at all. I mean, you know, we're, we're gonna work with our research team, we're gonna work with Dr. Figlio and his research team, we're gonna work with some folks that are grant-funded through the Spencer Foundation and through Chuck, Chuck Lewis and Penny Sebring, to really look at this data in a very sophisticated way to determine what those, what, what those markers are early on, and then build a metric that, an on-track metric for kids, that we can also report, right?
So by April? No, no, never mind.
We don't have to wait, by the way. This isn't gonna take five, we don't have to wait until these current ETHS students have a college experience that we can draw on.
No, no, no. I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and wait for it to be validated that way. I'm relatively impatient, I'm so impatient, I would like us to say.
We're waiting until Honor Allen gets to college.
I would really like to say the following. I would like to say, coming out of tonight, I would like to get the blessing of folks around the table to say, hey, you know what, go for five plus. That's what I, that's my, that's my hail mary for the evening. So I'm prepared to, to greenlight that if, if we have the consensus at the board level for that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Done and done, then, I'll get the team rolling. Thank you. Great.
And then I just have one question, and I'm putting you all on the spot, but you can just deflect. Do you have any timeline in mind when you might want to adopt the measures?
Well, I think.
I mean, like, maybe, like, you've given Pete a lot of things, I mean, do we bring them back next time, and then you're going to adopt in May, or do we? If you don't have an answer, I don't, you don't need it, but I'm just trying to kind of get a hand, my arms around this.
Personally, I'm in favor of April.
Good point.
So Doug can say he got something John Mulley was on. You know, maybe we should, maybe that's.
Or Doug could've said, June is fine.
You could've said that, right?
That's really, that's, yeah, I mean, I'm amenable to doing it sooner rather than later, whatever, whatever works.
As soon as we can do it, yes. Does that make sense? What answer did you hear?
What did you hear? Now, let me try a hail mary, but maybe this is a little too much. I, I see two ways. One is Pete takes what you've given him tonight, tunes it up, and we maybe bring it back for action next time, or maybe the, maybe the less hail mary, we bring it back next time, and then, and then hope to aim for the following meeting that is for action.
Bring it back. I mean, just bring it back.
If, if you, if, I, I think, I think if you can, if you can get, get it done, bring it back for, with the, with the, with the assumption that we'll be able to adopt the measures.
I would say to the, it's not like, it's not like it's a concrete.
Let's go for it.
Right, can I interject something, kind of a different perspective on this, is that, to me, our approval or adoption of this is not nearly as important as the ongoing conversation and the, that we're having. Because, so we adopt it, but in a year, and these are five-year goals, right? In a year, you're gonna learn a couple of things, and there's, we're gonna have to change what's in all these boxes a little bit here and there, I mean, from time to time.
Just as you already have.
You know, so. You know, the adoption, I think this conversation, you know, it is what it is now, today, and this is what we're working with, and we just keep improving it, and there's a back and forth.
What I've really appreciated throughout the process is the process and the conversation at the board level. I really, the investment is very clear, and, yeah, I feel like we've had more discussion around measures and an understanding of measures and how they function and a goal, and we've come up with some really wonderful ideas to integrate. And that's been the result of the, the process we've, we've had. And I see, you know, in, in subsequent years, as we report and refine, you know, opening up some discussion around how we're measuring, perhaps, because it is an iterative process. I don't see the targets changing too much, because I think the targets, we would like some terra firma on the targets, you know?
That's fine.
And I, I think I speak for, for my colleagues on that one. But in terms of how we measure, and in terms of the, the strategies, obviously, are gonna, they're gonna iterate constantly, right? They're very adaptive, they're boots-on-the-ground kind of things. But the discussion has been very fruitful, and I think there's a deep understanding around not only the goals, but the, the measures and the outcomes. So I want to thank everybody for their participation in that, and I've put me to work again, and I'm, I'm happy to come up with a good product. Got it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're shooting for our next meeting?
April.
So we'll aim to break, again, with all, taking all that into account, but we'll then build off of what you told us tonight and, and bring it back as a recommendation for the next meeting.
I think, I would love that. I would love that, that would be good.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's, we are at comments from the public? Do we have comments from the public?
Hi again, from over here. We have one person signed up this evening, it's Michael Tannen, and he's from the Evanston Library.
Hello, everyone, I'm back. I came back to you for the first time about four months ago, and I kind of warned you that I thought things would get worse before they got better in terms of our political landscape, and in fact, things are not getting better. And I'm, our own board has updated our own strategic plan, and we have the same debate that you have about whether things should be aspirational or mandatory. But given what's going on in Washington and Springfield, I would argue that many of the things that we each talk about are actually exercises in self-preservation. We need to work together. You as trustees are fiduciaries for all of Evanston, and we as library trustees are fiduciaries for all of Evanston. And one of the good things about that is we don't get bogged down in Balkanized ward politics, and which is why I'm going to continue to urge that singularly, you, you, we each do good things, but together, we can do great things. And I want to spend a few minutes talking to you about some of those things. I'm sorry that Wes Moore didn't come to the high school to talk, but 300 copies of the Wes Moore book were distributed to students. They were used in 15 sophomore classes and three junior classes. We thought it was an amazing book, and we hope that you found it helpful in the classroom. I've handed out to each of you, and I, extra copies will be put in the office of things that are happening at the Evanston Main Library's loft. There was a discussion about the video game club. One of the things that the Evanston Library has every Monday night is a board game club that you can pull your kids away from their iPads and their phones and actually play board games, and the handout is there. Jonathan talked about, I think at the last meeting or two meetings ago, having a sanctuary school ordinance, and based on everything that's going on in the world, I'm encouraging our board to adopt a similar resolution, because people need to feel safe coming to our libraries, and I thank Jonathan for paving the way with what he drafted. And then finally, I want to talk about Robert Crown. That library is going to happen. It's 5,000 square feet, it's going to be at the Robert Crown Center. We have loose renderings now. It is going to be absolutely phenomenal. Somewhat shockingly, there's only one library recreational center in the United States. There's a dozen or so in, in Canada. The Canadians actually have figured out the synergy that exists when you have a library and an athletic center together. I welcome one or all of you from, to meet with Karen Danzig Lyons, our director, and me, and give us your ideas about what you think might work in this new library. A great portion of it is gonna be dedicated to teens, and 5,000 square feet, it is a gigantic sandbox waiting for us to build it, and so your input would be valuable. I passed around my card to each of you, and if you have anything that you think might work, or something that's interesting, please let us know. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you again, I'll be back next month.
Thank you so much, and for your patience.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, so we are at FOIA's. Dr. Beavis.
We received a FOIA from RICUS, the response is in your packet.
Board committee reports, there's a report in the packet from the Curriculum Forum Committee. Do you have more you'd like to share?
Nope. I've sort of said it before, so.
Sort of, yes, you did. All right. Okay, we are at my favorite part, Student Board Report.
Hi, everybody, give me one second, I gotta get my notes up. Okay, so, I don't have that many things to say. First, tomorrow, sorry, I'm a little excited, okay. ETHS, Boys Basketball Elite Eight Supersessionals versus Whitney Young at Chicago State, it's super exciting. The entire school is so excited. We have like hundreds of kids, well, not hundreds, 100-plus kids going on the fan bus down to Chicago State, which meant that the first 100 kids who showed up yesterday to get tickets got them free and got to go on the fan bus, which is super cool. So, so many kids are going, and that's super exciting, and everyone's freaking out. Also tomorrow, we have a candidate forum during lunch period, so the mayoral candidates and city clerk candidates are gonna be coming to the South Study Cafe.
Very cool.
The coolest thing about this, to me, is that because the school can't endorse/run political events, this is super student motivated. We have a group of students from Community Service Club working on this, and they are doing such a great job, so that's very exciting, and that'll be happening tomorrow. I've seen some of the questions that students have submitted, and they're super cool and really well-informed, so that's really exciting. Okay, last two things. First of all, shout out to Ms. Boyd, who is seriously awesome, and you know, and like you've seen her, and whatever, but just speaking as a student who has, like, worked with her and benefited from the Student Activities Program. She and Ms. Harkness are amazing, and it's so awesome that we have them as resources in the school. The last thing I'll say is that there's a Policy Committee meeting on Thursday, and I don't know how many of you guys are gonna be there, but I think it's important to remember, not only at that meeting, but just in general, that there is definitely a disconnect in terms of the amount of information that certain community members have, board members have, the administration has. The Policy Committee meeting on Thursday is a good opportunity to maybe bridge some of those gaps, but not necessarily the only opportunity. And I'm keeping this vague, because I don't know exactly what I wanted to say with this. I wrote down information on my notes, and I don't know, it meant something to me at one point. So I think it's just important to remember that, especially in terms of some of the things that we're gonna be talking about at the Policy Committee meeting, there is just a lot of different facts floating around, and certain pieces of information that aren't necessarily getting everywhere. And so before we just write off somebody's opinion, if they're like from the community and aren't necessarily involved in the school directly, instead of just writing them off as like they don't know what they're talking about, remembering that we all have different sides of like the same story. So we have to be able to like listen to everyone, which I don't think any of you were like not planning on doing, but I wanted to say it anyway. So that's it.
We could use you in Washington, Anna.
I was just gonna say, the guidance is exquisite, thank you.
Amazing. Wonderful, thank you, Anna. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
Okay, well, we have no evidence that anybody has been wiretapped at ETHS.
Does that matter?
Don't need evidence.
Facts. But I do have a few other thing, other things to share with you tonight. Our Career and Technical Ed Department has actually introduced a new certification program for next year, and this is gonna be students interested in a career as a water operator, which is actually quite employable and, and, and with real career opportunities. It's gonna begin next fall. We're doing it in partnership with City Evanston, and we'll be offering certification as part of our industry slash engineering practicum, practicum courses. So another certification program in that. I actually had a cousin get certified in this in another state, and there's state testing and all sorts of things you have to do to be, qualify for this, and we're gonna offer that certification right here at ETHS. Just a, a couple of quick kudos. Be sure you are checking out our website, we're constantly putting all of these student and group and team honors, they just keep rolling in, such as our most recent Kiwanis Club honorees. But I do want to point out that one of our seniors, Allison Grimstad, has co, if you didn't read this one, you gotta hear this. I read this, and I thought, you sure this isn't a post-doctoral student? So Allison has co-authored a science research article with Northwestern University, and, oh, I'm sorry, we didn't put the title of it here. Does anybody remember even part of the title?
I looked at it.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I, they, we had it down. Look at the website. You've got to read about what this high school student is accomplishing and, and a published, and a, and a journaled scientific publication. Unbelievable. I'll jump on, since I don't have the title to impress you with. Sorry, I probably couldn't have pronounced all the words anyway. If, if you did not get to see the, a winter.
I got the title.
Oh, do you have it there? You, you wanna read it, if you have it?
I think so. Well, wait a minute.
Remember, the research group at Northwestern University, which produced a new particle detector that will provide a new channel in trying to detect dark matter and neutrino interactions. As part of the group, Grimstad has co-authored an article published on the.
ARZI, ARZIV, ARZIV.
Journal, as well as on the Fermilab publication pipeline.
There's more.
Thank you.
The article called First Demonstration of a Scintillating Xenon Bubble Chamber for Dark Matter and.
CEVNS.
It's available online.
There you go.
I am so glad you read it. It's like, it's so far beyond me, I, I'm not even sure I could've, could've read it.
Is everybody clear now?
Thank you, though. I, I think we needed to get that shout-out to Allison, and, and thank you for that. If you didn't make it to the winter concert last week, too bad. It was fantastic. Vocal band orchestra. But I do want to point out that they have several events coming up this, yet this week and next week. Jazz showcase, a cappella, solo, ensemble festival. Check out the school calendar, because there are a lot of things going on just in the next couple of weeks alone with our music department. We have another Community Build Day for our Geometry and Construction. That's this Saturday. Wouldn't you know, some of us think we're gonna be in Peoria that day. Okay, maybe I shouldn't have said that.
Nah.
But there is a Community Build Day this Saturday, March 18th, and anybody who wants to volunteer to help us build a house, and if you've never done that before, Mr. Metz is one of our most faithful in coming to those, and he actually knows what he's doing. So when I'm there, I just act as, as, as an assistant. But, but anyway, it, it's just a terrific experience, and you really don't have to have any building experience to come and do that. I do want to lift up that our seniors who have not yet applied for ETHS scholarships still have time, but the clock is ticking. Log into your MyETHS account, and you can return a signed application by 4:00 PM on March 20th. It's Monday, right? If I'm remembering right. So you got till 4:00 PM Monday to log in and, and get that done, and I, it's not that difficult. Get an application in for those scholarships, seniors. Any, any parents listening in, you know, give them a nudge. And ETHS students and families have received details about our Assessment Day, scheduled in April. We'll be administering the state-administered SAT exam this year. That will become the new standard in the state of Illinois. It is a highly legitimate college entrance exam. We will be doing the whole suite of exams in the coming years, from the ninth grade to the 10th PSAT, to the SAT. So everybody, this is serious business, and juniors, you need to be here on April 5th, and everybody else, you get a day off. So that's our Assessment Day. Spring break is going to be the week of March 27th to the 31st. Honor lifted this up already, but in case you didn't hear, there is a supsectional basketball game tomorrow night, Tuesday night, 7:00 PM, Chicago State University. Be there. All right, I won't use the rest of the cliche. It'll be, it'll be a great night for Evanston, and we can, we can cheer our team on, hopefully to a victory. That concludes my report.
So exciting. Good luck to the team. So exciting. Okay, so we are in our Action section. The first action is approval of Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust, and Jonathan's gonna read that for us.
Holocaust Remembrance Days, April 10th to April 14th, 2017. Whereas from 1933 to 1945, six million Jews and five million clerics, communists, dissidents, Roma, gays and lesbians, disabled people, Poles, Serbs, and Jehovah witnesses were murdered in the Holocaust as part of a systemic, systematic program of genocide, whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated, whereas the ETHS community should continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against tyrants and hate speech, and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through vigilance, education, and resistance, proclaim that April 10th through April 14th, 2017, be hereby designated as Holocaust Remembrance Days at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you, Jonathan. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hold.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next item is approval of international travel for 2017-18. Motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hold.
Yes.
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 I've given this a lot of thought, and, and because I'm not convinced that we have developed a system for ensuring equity in providing subject, I'm gonna vote no.
Yes. Thank you. Approval of textbooks, adoption, deletion proposals.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, so seventeen, approval of Illinois High School Association 2017-18 membership.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Approval of general construction bid.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Approval of roof facade construction bid.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so the consent agenda, which consists of the Treasurer's Report, January 2017, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointment to staff exempt, change in status, stipends, leave of absence certified, and support staff resignation certified.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are at old and new business. Is there any old or new business? All right, and I think this meeting is adjourned.
Can I, can I just give a shout-out before we, so, I'm super excited about our boys. I'm gonna be there tomorrow, but I have to give our girls a shout-out. They played their butts off this season under a brand-new coach, attended a lot of those games with, with Superintendent Witherspoon sitting down in his spot, right there, every game.
These spots, yeah.
But, you know, but I just wish, and I live for the day, and I will be here to experience it, when our community will come out and support our girls just as much as they support our boys, because that was probably the best team that I have seen living here in Evanston, not just over the four years, but period. So I have to give our girls a shout-out. They played their hearts out, and I love our boys, and I'll be there, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm consistent.
But the girls were conference champs and re- and regional champs.
They were, and, you know, I just, I just wish we would have the same energy and excitement for our young ladies, because we know that when they play sports, that their confidence is high, they do, everything else is like second to none when we can get them engaged. So we have to do a better job pushing that, too. It's not just the community, but we gotta push that from the outside, so, from the outside out.
Thank you, Mommy. Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And I will be there tomorrow.